Hello.
Good evening.
Eric. Okay, we're good to roll?
Yep.
Those are public to let in, other than, other than Lillian. Nice to have you here. Um, so good evening, everybody. Couple of quick announcements. A constituent let us know that an announcement was on the Kenny executives Facebook this afternoon that the testing center will be closed tomorrow until noon, delayed opening because of the storm and they are no longer going to be open on Saturdays. I'm hoping that we get official communication about that. But if anyone's hoping to go early in the morning, there will be no, no one there to swab your nose until noon tomorrow. Um, I want to say thank you to our highway crew who've been doing back to back storms and cleanup and dealing with flooding and all of the repercussions of lots of precipitation very quickly. Um, and they have pre-salted tonight and we'll be back in at 3am this morning to begin pre-salting again for tonight's expected freezing rain and then snow after five. Hopefully it's just going to be about an inch or two. So it shouldn't. Hopefully the plowing will be easy and it won't take them as long as the last storm took them. They're pretty pretty worn out after all those hours. So thank you to them and thank you to villagers for being flexible as we've moved garbage to accommodate COVID shortage, staff shortages for both us and Royal. Thank you for everyone for doing that. And I also want to say thank you to Jeff and Eliza for really upping the village's game on communications. Um, getting the message out to villagers to let them know when changes are happening, parking, garbage, et cetera. And also wanted to let people, let folks know that the wall project on Main Street is pausing for the very cold weather. Um, and we'll start again probably mid to late March, depending on how the weather goes, but it's just too cold for those guys to be. They, they got all the way up to the steps at the top end of the section and they'll be back in mid-March to late March. Um, okay, so those are all the announcements for me. So first item, are there any requests to add items to the agenda this evening? Hearing none. We will say welcome to Anthony and David. It's, it's, it's nice to see faces. Now, we, we talked to you guys a lot on the phone. I, Jeff and I asked Anthony and David to come in to, you know, a pause, an administration change, ask the question, what do you see that we're doing that we could be doing better? We've asked the question in a, in a very broad way. And then we will take recommendations and sift them through a communications committee and with budget, working with Michelle, figure out what we can do and when. I want to assure you, we're not going to run out and go crazy spending money right now, but we want to figure out what we can be doing better to make staff time more efficient and our time as trustees more efficient and make sure that we're properly securing files and putting a pin in for you guys at some point in the conversation. I understand that the fire company also uses you.
Yeah.
Um, so it'd be interesting to hear if there are any ways we can optimize to, you know, their village department too, if we can optimize how that relationship works, that would be awesome. So over to you.
Uh, so thanks for having us. We appreciate being partners with you guys in technology. This year actually makes 10 years that we've been working together with the village. Um, and when we first came over and started working with the village, it was, uh, all the systems were disparate and nothing was connected. Um, we've over slowly over time brought everything kind of up to speed where it should be in terms of security mainly and technology. Um, I did put together a slideshow, a presentation with some information documentation and some numbers of where I, where based on the information we got, you know, some options to kind of bridge the gap a little bit and where we need to improve and where we could improve. Um, so we want to thank you again for having us. And if you're ready, I'll, I'll pull up the PowerPoint.
Oh, fine.
All right. So let's share the screen. Alrighty, so this is the PowerPoint. It's kind of very basic. I'm not, uh, I'm a tech geek, not exactly the best presenter. So excuse me if it's a little boring. Um, so this is just a cover page I made. Um, so for people and village residents that don't know, so who are we? We are a managed services provider. That's what we're coined in the industry. And basically what that means is we design, develop, build and manage information systems on anything from, we do everything from small one man shop companies which are local all the way to big enterprise commercial and law enforcement based systems that are each requires our own little niche of security. Um, we've been a business since 2006. Professionally, we've been doing, I've been doing it for far longer than that. So, uh, which is nice because it's been able to broaden my horizon in terms of things that we can offer and technologies used. Um, so that's a little bit about us. So this is just, uh, basically a little summary of how, what I just explained previously, how we've started working. When we started working with the village, there was a server in place specifically for the financial software. Uh, it was, there were no backups. There were no user profile, like migration things and use. Uh, email was kind of all over the place. Um, so over time, you know, we've centralized the management of the network, which makes it better, more cost effective and, and easier to manage security wise. The village, uh, we've also increased the backup system. So now we have a much more robust backup management system. We can do data and image backups. Uh, we can get into the nitty gritty of what all that means if anybody has any questions about it. Um, and tonight's meeting is basically to see how we can continue moving forward um, in today's technology and, and use, uh, what I like to say is tomorrow's technology for a better today. So that's what this presentation is going to give. Like I said, it's very rudimentary. It's very information based. So one of the main topics of concern specifically which came about because of COVID in the, in the recent years was the use of remote meetings, remote workers. Um, you know, and we've brought the technology to where key employees can work remotely. Um, recently we've actually upgraded the email system, uh, which was a very archaic system to now what is on the, um, Microsoft platform, which is very robust in terms of security. We have all of your data is kept on United States based servers. Because you're a government organization, we make sure that certification is in place. I'm just waiting for the final certification of that. And we'll provide, you should be getting a certificate or some kind of documentation from Microsoft that'll explain that to you. Um, this way you know, because Microsoft has servers all over the world, but we want to make sure US based information stays here, especially for municipalities and government agencies. Um, so one of the things that we'd like to discuss, uh, and we'll, we'll talk about pricing at the last slide is, you know, Microsoft has really kind of besides Zoom coined the market in terms of collaboration technologies. Um, they, they started with OneDrive, uh, which was always kind of SharePoint on the commercial side. And now basically their platform is Teams. And the one option that we think would really benefit um, the village, specifically the board members would be to really kind of delve into a Microsoft Teams platform. It offers the ability to, rather than you Zoom, you use Microsoft Teams, but in, but Teams isn't only a meeting application. So you can work on documents in real time together on Teams. Um, you can work on them at the same time, collaborate with them in real time. Uh, and so right now, a lot of remote, remote workers use a VPN technology. Um, and we can actually, what's nice about the Teams and the 365 platform is that you can log into Microsoft's email, uh, you can log into Microsoft's platform with your village email, with your multi-factor authentication, which we've made very easy with the, the digits on the phones and stuff. And you can have access to virtually everything without having to remote desktop. You could do it from your phone, from a tablet, from anywhere that you're either comfortable working or where, you know, where you have to be working. That's not the office. Um, so it's, we have a few pictures of, so what this is a picture of, Microsoft released this a little while ago. Um, I'm sure you guys have all heard of like smart TVs or like, um, the smart board technology that's mainly used in the schools. This is Microsoft spin on it. And what this is, it is a full touchscreen Microsoft. They call it the Microsoft Hub 2. There's two versions. They have a 50 inch and they have an 85 inch. And what's nice about them is the backbone of this entire system is Teams. Um, it's got, it's got a built-in camera. It's made for boardroom type meetings. It's a wide angle view camera, 4K. So you get a lot of detail. Uh, got good microphones built into it. And you can, you touch it in real time, just like you have a touchscreen monitor, which is nice. Um, you know, and this, in terms of COVID era, I'm going to call it that we're in, when we start coming back into person, what's nice about it is and with teams in general, you don't need this particular device to have it. But you can actually bridge that gap where say if the board members come into a meeting, but we don't have the public in yet. You can still have the public join and interact in real time, like you see the people in this photo doing. And you can have a really good, open, effective, you know, conversation with everything going on that you guys want to discuss. Okay. So that was, so that's kind of the collaboration side of it. The next one is about the hardware and the servers, which, um, have to get one in a little while. Are there any questions or concerns or ideas about the collaboration stuff?
Anthony, I just want to confirm what you said. So with this, we could kind of do a hybrid in-person virtual meetings in real time for everybody.
Yes.
And it's, I, with this setup, it's, it's, it looks like it's pretty easy.
But make it, we'll make it look, we'll make it that easy, as easy as it looks. So what's nice about this is, um, and I didn't finish the thought part, I apologize. So you can, you can have the board members in on the meeting and have the public on the outside, you know, connecting in, just like they're connecting in now. Um, and you can also, you know, have everybody completely remote. And if you're, when you're in full session and everybody's in the building, you can still activate this so that people that either are uncomfortable coming into the building still or out of town and can't make it, or, you know, in a perfect world, if, if everybody's in the building, you can still activate this to record the meeting to then republish it. Which makes your republishing and your posting it a lot more easy, a lot more efficient. You can even publish it on the Microsoft Teams platform or more, more than likely convert it and post it on the YouTube channel that the village may already have. So there's a lot of, you know, this investment and you don't have to particularly use this piece of hardware to do it. There's other ways around it, which we'll explain a little bit later. This will kind of bridge that gap. So from where we are now to where we could be, you know, months away, and then when everybody's back in person completely.
I have a question. Um, in terms of like microphones, like if this were in front of the village board and we're sitting at the table together and that is our audience, um, participating, how does the microphone work to, so that they can hear all of us clearly?
According to the doc, we haven't installed one of these yet because they're so new, but according to the documentation, it's a high fidelity, very sensitive microphone. And the Teams platform, just like Zoom, auto levels the volume so that it can, you know, obviously would have to be more conscientious about, you know, taking the turn, speaking and making sure there's, you know, not a lot of, you know, room noise. Um, but we can always more than likely, if this is basically a computer and a TV. So if there was ever an audio issue, whether it be sound or, you know, coming out or microphones going in, we could more than likely always add additional devices in the room. That are either Bluetooth or wired or some other wireless form of technology.
Our meeting room is fairly small. Um, but it has been, as you know, but it has been difficult with people masked um, to hear. And, you know, God, if there's a God, someday we won't be wearing masks again. Um, and that resolves that problem, but um, we, we definitely in our recorded meetings, because we're, we're using an old camera with an old mic, you know, the, the, the recording quality is pretty poor. And when you watch the, when you watch the meetings online, the sound quality isn't great. So that, that I think that Eliza raises a really good point that we want to, we want to know for sure that, that the microphones are going to do a fantastic job.
Oh, 100%, 100%. What I would do, you know, th- th- this device would be a, a, a pretty large purchase. Um, just because it's new technology. So what we would try to do, believe it or not, is we would try to have a demo of it. And whether, you know, that might mean, you know, us going someplace local to have it, if not, if not our office, or maybe even getting a demo unit there to really use it and see how it works. Um, I mean, I, I don't, when you see the price of it later. So, so the 50, so the 50, the 50 inch unit retails without any government specialized pricing for basically $10,000.
Gosh.
The 85 inch is double the price. So, you know, I don't see any company, and, and I mean, we all know how big companies work. I don't see them having you invest that much without it being the best possible equipment that there could be, you know, but like I said, before making any kind of investment, we definitely do the research and we'll bring it to you and show you in any way possible to make sure that it is an economically efficient decision and the right tool for the job, so to speak. You know, we wouldn't just say, hey, here you go. Good luck. Like that's not, that's not our style, you know, um. We want to make sure that it fits the bill and that everybody's happy and it does what it's supposed to do. And we, you know, we stand behind everything we do. So we'll definitely work that in to make sure it all works well.
Is there a way to use Teams, um, where instead of having a smart board, we have one uh, camera that captures the village officials and a mic or multiple mics? And then could we possibly use our own laptops in front of us so that we could see the audience the way the smart board is showing here, um, rather than purchasing an expensive piece of equipment? Is there a, a shortcut or?
Yeah. So the other option, uh, which is virtually half the price. Um, and then I'll, I'll get to your example also, but the other option is you buy a regular 50 inch television, you buy a small microcomputer that we would mount to the back of the computer. Put it on a stand, just like you see here, so you can move it from the courtroom to the boardroom. Um, and basically it would be a computer with a microphone and a wide angle camera. Um, and it's a, if it's effectively, I mean, the stuff I priced out as of today would be like around 4,500 for the hardware versus 10. So it's, it's a little bit less than half. Um, but you can always, you can always certainly join the meeting as another caller on another device. You know, I mean, that's always 100% an option. Um, this is made, you know, just for the idea of collaborating and build and bridging that gap, but you don't have, that's a, that's a very expensive product. I mean, that investment. You know, I'm sure you all would agree, you know, well, you would get years out of it, but it's still upfront compared to buying the TV, the computer, the monitor, the mouse and everything like that and the software. Um, you know, but there's always many options. Uh, even if you use this, you could always still call in as a board member, just the same. Did that answer you?
Yes, yes, that did. Thanks.
Perfect. Um, any other questions about this stuff? Or should I move on?
Good to go.
Okay. So, um, the other, so now we're going to move on to, you guys have on-premise servers. Um, you guys have them. You have two separate servers upstairs in the, in the, I'm going to call network slash storage room. Um, one is for the village uh, offices and the other is for the police department. So those servers are approaching end of life. Um, I didn't get the actual date of purchase, but they were, they were purchased shortly after joining the village. So probably a year, like I'd say two years because they're running Microsoft Windows Server 2012. And we got that as it was coming out and being published by Microsoft. So, um, maybe a year or two later. So we're, what Microsoft does, like any other software vendor, is they make their software end of life. But also in terms of the hardware, you know, we've gotten more than the industry average out of the hardware, you know, servers, we like to get. You know, the industry average, even with servers, believe it or not, is like, I'd say five to seven years, just like a workstation would be three to five. We've gotten a good, we're approaching the seven, eight year mark. Um, but so next year, March of 2023, if I'm not mistaken about the exact date, Microsoft is, uh, making the Windows Server 2012 R2 operating system obsolete, which basically means that they will no longer provide security patches or security updates to the operating system. Right now, the servers are at, are also what's called, um, bare metal servers. So if take a back, take the backup that we have away, if one of the pieces of hardware in the servers goes, that server is down until we get the replacement hardware. Um, when we did this years ago, the, the budget didn't exist to really invest in the virtualized technology. Um, our plan going forward, when it's, when it's time to, and we'll have more sit-down meetings about it and pricing and costs. Um, I did give some general information, but we can always tailor that a little bit more is we'd like to, uh, virtualize the operating systems. So it's kind of a hard concept to understand because all that everybody knows is when you sign onto a computer, it does what you want and you don't care what the backend really is built on. Um, so the, the, the idea of virtualizing the system is that the server, operating system and applications and saw, and, you know, the whole system actually is what is presented to the physical system as basically a piece of software residing on a much more, a Linux-based backend system. And what that does is it gives you the opportunity, say if the village had a need for, so right now you guys have an active directory and a, and a file server and an application server. Say if the village wanted to host their own website or have a completely separate database, uh, where it was like a, um, a laser feast type system. With the virtualized technology, we could carve off the resources that aren't being used on the physical host is what it's called. And actually spin up another server instance in with much, without having to spend any more money on hardware and with a lot less labor because the platform is already there for it. The other thing that's nice about the virtual technology is that the way we're going to build this, we want to build the servers anyway for it to protect business continuity is say a piece of hardware on the village server fails and, and both the police and village servers are virtualized. We, if we would actually be able to move the village virtualized instance onto the police department server and have you back up and running within, I would say conservatively a few hours, if not less than a day. So we can't do that right now because the actual software is interacting directly with the hardware, not another platform where that basically says the hardware doesn't even matter what's behind it. Um, it's a little bit more of an investment in the overall system, but the opportunity to, and the cost efficiency in terms of hot, like a hardware failure is significantly cut in half. I mean, I can give you examples. We've, we've done recoveries where our servers have failed and they were upwards of $20,000 to $30,000 in recovery efforts. Um, but these were also people that didn't have the backup system that we have. You know, we do, we do two different types of backups every night. We do a virtualized backup where the server operating system is actually, even though it's not virtualized on the platform that it lives on day to day, there's a virtual copy of it in the cloud, which abides by PCI DSS compliances, HIPAA compliances. It's in a SOC 2 facility um, at undisclosed locations in the country. And or if the server failed now, we could loan you a computer because of the backup we have in place, download the virtualized instance and have you running with information as late as, as early as, you know, last night, just the same. So because of the backup that we have in place, we can do that, but for a more rapid solution where you're on your own hardware, we want to build the servers to basically support them, support each other if there ever, uh, situation ever arose to do that. Um.
So Anthony, I have a quick question.
Sure.
So this virtualization process that you're talking about, are you saying that the physical servers, when we remove them would be gone and this would be a web-based system?
No, so we would still have, we would still have the physical equipment in the, in the facility. Um, we want it, we want to kind of keep it that way because of the financial software that's used for all the village information. And, you know, one of the things about a cloud, a fully cloud-based system is that if you lose connectivity, you lose access. Um, and we know that the wires in the village are not the best. Um, anywhere in the village, y- you know, uh, there's, there's quite a, when the storms hit, there's outages left and right. Um, and we don't want to put anybody into a position where they can't work. So we like the local, it, the local servers for your platform, for your day-to-day work. Um, but the newer operating systems can bridge the gap more uh, with the Microsoft Teams environment because, so Server 2019 and even 2021, which is going to be released shortly, or 2022 rather, I'm sorry. They already have the built-in applications to fully sync the system to that, what's the Microsoft Azure Cloud. So you could essentially run a hybrid where, which would, it would make it easier, even easier for remote workers. It would make it less labor intensive to set up and migrate the data. And, um, even if the internet did go out, there's still some kind of cash data in Microsoft Azure Cloud because of the way it syncs and the way we would set it up to sync. But to answer your question directly, these would still require physical machines in your building.
So we're probably looking at purchasing new servers, uh, next 12 to 18 months.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I have some pricing in general, really general pricing information on the last slide about it. Some of the computers, the workstations, uh, are also, they're getting up there in age. Um, we actually have a document, I didn't have, bring it for the meeting tonight, but we have a document, Michelle and Jeff have it. Um, that gives the exact age of the hall in use when it was purchased, the warranty information, the software on it, the software versions. We just recently upgraded a couple of workstations and within the last year, we did Microsoft Office. So Office should be good for at least five years for the applications on the desktop. Um, but if we move into the Teams, if we upgrade the, the, the mail hosting plan and move into the Teams platform, your Microsoft subscription will actually follow the user, not the physical machine. So right now, because we started do, when we started doing everything with the village, like this, this virtualized software and cloud-based licensing software didn't really exist. Um, and no one really saw the value in paying a monthly subscription for a piece, an application because it's, it's more to manage. Um, and things of that nature. But if, if we move to a Teams platform, each individual user account gets to install Microsoft Office applications on up to five devices. So you could have a laptop, a phone, a tablet, your office machine, you know, Office wouldn't, the, the app with the Microsoft Office suite wouldn't be tied to the computer anymore. It'd be tied to the person. So it would make everything a little bit easier to manage in terms of the team solution. The stuff we have now still works with it, but not as smoothly as the cloud-based software. Um, so, but what I was saying was I, I fight off the handle because I love this stuff. I'm a geek at heart. Um, the applications you use now can certainly support the cloud stuff and the wor- the age of the workstations, the software doesn't need to be upgraded. I'm sorry. For, for at least five years, because we just did it within a year. Um, but some of the workstations may, I think, Anne actually is probably using one of the oldest workstations in the, in the village hall. Um, but we could talk about those a little bit later. I, I did break out some of that pricing later on too. Sorry if I got off topic a little bit.
And when you say a user, that's an email address?
Yeah. So what, um, when I say user in terms of the software licensing, it's based on your, um, email address.
Okay.
Right now, the village pays per user for email, but that is basically the bottom level of service that Microsoft offers. Um, you have email and we have, uh, an investigative back end to it for like FOIL requests, but that's it. It doesn't offer you actual software that you can install. It only offers you the cloud, the, um, the web-based client. We have it working with your applications because it's still designed to work with the desktop applications, whether they're part of the license or not. Any other questions? Okay. Um, so this was just more information. We just spoke about with bridging the gap from having the servers locally as well as having them in the cloud. Um, I should, but this lineup actually, I apologize. Um, but this is Microsoft, a, a photo of the management side of Microsoft's, um, Azure platform, which is where you could have single sign-on technology and meet some other security compliances if there ever was a need to with employees working remotely. Uh, so we're gonna, if there's no other questions, we'll move on to some surveillance improvements. Um, if everybody's okay with that?
Yep.
All right. So a couple of years ago, there was an interest in surveillance at the village hall. Uh, we even, we Uh, we even, we installed some cameras to monitor the front and rear of the buildings. As time went on, there was, uh, more of a demand for monitoring other key locations in the village. Um, and the, the, the locations at that point in time were. The bathroom, the public bathroom where the trolley is by the train station, if I'm saying that right, not by the train station, but yeah, over there. And then, um, Mayor's Park. Uh, there was, there was some issues there that, you know, warranted some CCTV monitoring. And so right now, what the way the camera system work is all the cameras on the, on the actual village, village hall. Are hardwired into a recording system. We have antennas on top of the village hall, two particularly, one points. Down to Mayor's Park and there's a wireless microwave link connecting one camera. At that facility. And the same technology with a separate set of antennas is used. For the bathroom at the end of Main Street. Um. There have been some. Some issues, um, with just relation to microwave technology. That has given some gaps in the video footage, particularly when the weather's bad, when foliage is fully grown. Microwave technology, especially at that distance. Um, needs true line of sight. We have it working without true line of sight, um, but it could always be, anything can be improved upon. So, uh, in talking to some of the vendors that we use. Um, there was a couple of options that we had discussed. Um. One main option was, uh, which brought up, was brought up by having a camera system at the waterfront, at the gazebo particularly, because there was some vandalism going on. Was to have an, uh, recording system there as well. We did some investigations and research into having a microwave link there. Um. But the cameras are so high def. That we want to use. That you really need an expensive microwave system with licensed frequencies to really get the full video quality. So one of the things that we were looking at, rather than doing that, was we would have a standalone recording system at the gazebo. With cameras connected to it directly. Um, and that would give you twenty four seven recording, we would set it up to record on motion. And we would do, uh, one frame per second when there's no motion, so that there's literally no video loss. And the benefit to that is that there'd be no breaks in video footage because of the foliage and bad weather and things of that nature. Um. And what we were going to still incorporate the microwave link, this way from the village hall, the police department could do investigations. But in speaking to some of the vendors earlier this week, um, and as, as early as this, you know, late as this morning. There, there's new. Integration options in terms of app likes, monitoring systems. That are basically cloud based. Um, and we feel that. Um, I know one of the, I think it was, um, Mr. Curdo, um, had asked, you know, you use Hic Vision, I think you had mentioned, correct? With multiple other locations?
Uh, correct.
So, um. We would, we would, this cloud system would be nice. Um, as compared to Hic Vision because. They sell a recorder that we would actually replace the one in the village hall with. We'd be able to use the same cameras, change the recording device. And then we'd also have, be able to have remote cameras. At the gazebo and at Mayor's Park. All in one video management system because both the local recording system and the remote cameras. Would both record to the, the main cloud system. And from a phone app, a computer app or a website, you would be able to access. All of the video footage more efficiently. Um, with less trouble. Right now, the only people that have access to it. Um, for security reasons are the police department because they're the ones doing the investigations anyway. Um, but we could definitely open that up to whatever the village wants or needs, um, to help assist in things as well.
Anthony?
Yes.
Do I understand you correctly? Are you saying that the cameras, the cameras that we have in the existing locations? At Mayor's Park and the bottom of Main Street could be used with the new system?
From what it was explained to us, we provided them the camera models, yeah, so there, they could be used, there's a backend. A standard, it's called an OnViv compliance standard. That all camera manufacturers have to include in their software. So that if you buy a Hic Vision camera or a Spico camera or a Vigilon camera. You could, you're not stuck with that brand of recording system, you could use that with other systems and the cameras that we have. Are OnViv compliant, so they, they will work with the system going forward, yes, if this was the option chosen. Which I'm actually still waiting for pricing from.
Okay.
Also.
So it, it would be. You could integrate. Cameras and other locations.
Yes.
That are different from the cameras we have.
Correct.
But be able to back all of them up. To a cloud based.
Yeah. You said that much better than me.
Quick question on the cameras while you're on it?
Yes, sir.
So Mayor's Park has one camera, correct?
Yes, sir.
Just my gut would say that's probably not sufficient for an area of that size.
I, I agree.
What would be your ideal configure it? Cause I remember from the police reports, I guess the past couple of months, there's been some vandalism issues. And I didn't know we had a camera and I don't know if this camera is playing part in the investigation. Or. The people that are vandalizing see the camera and know that if I vandalize three feet to the left, I'm not going to get picked up on the camera.
So, um, what brought about the, what brought about the cameras initially was that the bathrooms specifically at both locations were getting broken into. Which, which has its issues, um. You know, for, for, you know, just personal safety. Um, so that's why the focus of the cameras was only at that point to cover the bathroom entrances. But now, from what I understand, there's been vandalism to other parts. Of the building, so like tables have been vandalized from what I understand. Um, if I was, you know, the, the plan, the plan that I was gonna have this evening, it had the pricing come down was. I would like to have between four to six cameras at Mayor's Park. And it would cover underneath the building. And both sides of the bathroom entrances. Um, and I would do four to six cameras at the gazebo on the waterfront as well. I know there's, that there's been some vandalism specifically with the lights at night and. Those lights are not the, uh. They're, they're pretty expensive from what, you know, what, what I understand. Um. So we would, we would want to cover, you know, you always want to over cover. And have more footage than what you need, especially when a crime occurs. Um, and you want, you not only want to be able to see the area, you want to be able to. Use it to make some sort of identification to go after that person legally or those in, in person or individuals or group of people legally. Um, and the, the cameras that we would use would be five plus megapixel cameras. The ones that we have now, the two bullet cameras in front of the village hall are four or five megapixel. Uh, the cameras inside the police department are two megapixel. Um, I believe all of them are two megapixel aside from the bullets on the front, those are four or five megapixel. So we would look to have five plus megapixel cameras. Um, that are statically positioned. Um, I know one question that usually comes up in terms of camera systems is. Well, what about one of those cool PTZ cameras that you can move? And look at things with. And, uh, being in law enforcement myself and having an extensive, um, experience in working with surveillance systems. Uh, the camera that you can move is always looking at the wrong place at the right time. Ninety nine point nine percent of the time, unless you have somebody sitting there. Watching that camera and watching the area, you're always going to miss something. Even if you have somebody sitting there, there's a very high chance of you missing something. So we like to blanket the whole area with high quality video. From multiple angles, this way you have everything covered. And if you miss on one angle, we'll sure to pick it up on another one, at least one more anyway.
Anthony, can we also look at? In Village Hall itself. In the interior, right now, there are a couple of cameras, I think it's two or three. You know, Kathy has them on her monitor in the back of the courtroom.
From ADT.
Yeah, that the court pays for through ADT.
Yeah.
I wonder if it makes sense if we migrated those. If we're gonna do all this, we already have cameras upstairs. At the police station outside of Village Hall, does it make sense to migrate those over?
Uh, we certainly could incorporate them into the system. I mean, uh, so those are using, um, analog technology. So it'd be a new camera because of the technology and use, new wire onto upstairs. Um, but we certainly, we certainly can, I mean, there's, there's no reason to have separate recording systems. And, you know, if we end up moving to this, this platform. Where key personnel have access to it, you know, twenty four seven for safety and security, there's no reason why we shouldn't integrate those as well. Any other questions, comments?
Not at this point.
Okay. Um. So one of the other topics was a notification system. Um. So we've done some research, um, honestly for our business, um, ourselves, um, in, in terms of a text message. Uh, technology, you know, everybody's on their phone nowadays. Uh, whether it's a smartphone or a flip phone, everybody gets a text message. And what's nice about a text message is that it's immediate. It's an immediate notification, but it doesn't require an immediate response most of the time. Um, so. We do agree that in terms of a mass notification system for things going on in the village, such as, you know, parking is restricted on certain locations. Or God forbid, there's an emergency, a building collapse on the street, avoid that at all costs. You know, very drastic examples, I apologize. Um, but that's where these systems are used in big municipalities. Um, we definitely, there is a value to it. These are only a couple of the vendors that, what we were looking at. Um. So each one of these actually offers the ability to not only send text messages out. But also respond to people if they send messages back to you. I know that that's not what we're looking to do here, we're looking to just basically send out notifications for safety. And other things going on. Um, we'd have to, you know, I'm sure that you could turn off replies, um, or like send backs. Some of them, you have to have the user actually opt into the notifications for their own privacy. So like easy texting, for example, they're one of the platforms where. You would have somebody text message, a set of numbers or a code to a phone number. Or a four or five digit, you know, text message number. And once. They opt in, so to speak, they would be able to get your notifications. Um, I have some of the lowest pricing options listed here, um, just like everything else in life, the sky's the limit from these companies. Um. So we specifically looked at for us, ourselves in-house, the easy texting in the text line. Currently, we're providing phone service to you guys as well as the IT management, because they're basically computers too now, the phones. And what we were recommended from, from our vendor was the Twilio platform. And this offers. Different options based on the numbers of text messages you send. Or you can sign up for a committed use contract, meaning that you're gonna, you know, you're paying to be able to send, say, five thousand text messages a month. Or to so many numbers. Um, Call Multiplier was another big company that we had found. Um, we would definitely help you guys do the research, um, coming from our phone vendors, um. You know, line, they are pushing Pilio, uh, Twilio. And they're, you know, the, the vendor we use is a pretty big vendor like nationwide, so they're not going to use anything that's bad, obviously. All of these platforms come with a free thirty or sixty day trial. There's, what's nice about a lot of them besides the Twilio one or even them is they're non-contract. So if you're not happy with the platform, you could always just up and leave and switch. We were looking at whether the existing phone system can support the, the, um. The mass text notification. And the platform that they would use internally would be like a call center type system and it wouldn't, it wouldn't fit. What you guys were looking to do, that's why it's not listed here. Um. So these are their options regarding the texting services that we would recommend and help you, you know, transition over to or choose. Um, any questions or concerns about them?
I assume that these live. We would need to build a database of contact numbers.
Correct.
Um. I would imagine that we would. Want people to opt in as opposed to, you know. Sending out text to numbers we think are in the village. So. That would. Would that, would that live? How, how does, how does that list live? How does, how do we maintain that list? To interface with. The system.
So all of these, all of these platforms are web based. Nothing would live on our servers, um, we could look into a platform like that, um. I actually honestly didn't think to even look at something like that, but we certainly could look at something like that.
I'm just wondering, thinking ahead to when, you know, people are wanting to add or drop off or.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah.
How, how that actually happens and, you know, is that a, is that a, a database maintained by the clerk? Is it a, how does it live?
Uh, so that would be up to the determination of the village. I mean, someone would, would have to be coined, you know, with, with. Managed, so basically you'd log into a web platform. And it, you know, uh, one of the key personnel that's decided amongst the village board to, to be tasked with it. They would log into a platform that's web based, website, you would list, enter all the, you know, users' phone numbers that you would want to notify. And then you would make a group of those phone numbers to send the mass notifications out to, all within the web platform. And if anybody, if, if you guys did choose to have responses back from people, all of that would live on. Though, these platform systems on the web.
So it's an integrated system where you, in, in much the way that we send email blasts, we have a contact list that.
Yes.
That is drawn from to send the blast.
A hundred percent, yes, same exact, same exact methodology, it's just a phone number instead of an email address, correct?
And we don't want replies.
Yeah.
I don't.
Yeah, that, that would be a little overwhelming.
Yeah.
I'm sure you'd get some interesting stuff to say the least.
What do we use now for the emails, constant contact?
I, it's actually all based off of our website. So people have to actively sign up for. Um, to be, to be contacted via email. So our, the people who host our website. Uh, Civic Plus. Whatever, I'm not sure what system they use, but they're the ones to manage it. So we just send out one blast based on. And we have about six hundred. People who have signed up for emails.
So as a side note, every phone number. Believe it or not, every carrier allows. It's gonna sound really weird, but you can send from an email client to a text message. So like if you have Verizon. For example, I, just because I know theirs, if you did your phone, if you have Verizon cell service and you did your phone number. No dashes, spaces, just a phone number at Vtext dot com. You would actually email that person from your client and it would appear as a text message on their phone. As an SMS message. So that may be something that you could use that's already integrated. And rather than having an email address, I mean, it essentially isn't email, it's just a phone number instead of a username. You'd have the phone number at whatever carrier they have and there's a list of them published. And that could be, obviously, you know, it would have, you know, you wouldn't want to send a lot of stuff in those based messages, you want something that's quick to read. You know, on the phone of a screen, a notification pop up or, or people's watches, you know, nothing crazy like a full blown email. But I would see if maybe what you're using now maybe would support that because. You already have the database built and the contacts built, all you'd have to do instead of re-entering all them would be just add the phone numbers and whatever carrier they have. And make a different group for SMS based notifications rather than. Um, emails. It's just, just an option to brainstorm about, that's all.
I mean, where, where, where we're able to optimize what we already have.
Yeah.
Seems like a good idea, right? It's not something, not something new to learn, right?
Correct.
Um. Hmm, okay. Jeff, how, how manageable is the? Do, do you feel that the, the list you use for email blasts is, is? Easy to manage, easy to use? Are you happy with that, with the, with the format it's in now?
Well, yeah, I mean, for it's, I just type up a message, you know. When we post something to the website, if I want an email blast, I just click a box that says email notification. And it sends it out to everybody who's signed up for emails.
And, and maintaining, maintaining the list of emails. Is pretty straightforward. For you?
Yeah, the hard, I mean, it takes me all thirty seconds to add someone to the list.
Okay.
Jeff, can you add different groups of, uh, like email notification groups to send to?
We could set it up so that. Yes, there, there are different groups that people could sign up for. Someone could sign up for, you know, if I just want urgent alerts, I just want. The news items, I just want to see agendas for the HDRB.
Okay.
Those are all options that we give them when they sign up for email alerts.
Oh, awesome. So it might, you might have, be able to make another group if you want text alerts or SMS alerts, there you go. Okay.
I could, I'll talk to Civic Plus to see about it. If that's a possibility.
Um. Any other questions, concerns about the text messaging stuff?
Excuse me, I have a question. I don't know if you can hear me. This is Tweeps. Sorry, my, I'm having tech issues this evening.
Sorry.
Yeah, so. For the SMS. What's the timing on that? I mean, I think one of the things that we've been concerned about is in situations like. In pending snowstorms. You know, streets that are flooded, things, things that I need immediate, we want people to know immediately versus waiting until they. You know, check their email, which I realize people check their email quite a bit, but a text message is kind of like that next level of urgency. And that's what we'd want to use it for, not the, like, Happy Sunday type text. So I'm just wondering like what, what the timing would be in terms of implementing a system like this.
So I mean, implement, I think it depends on how fast you get the information. That's with anything though. In terms of, in terms of how fast they would get the notification. It's, it's basically instantly. You click the button and within a couple of seconds, you know, it's, it's almost like you're sending it from another phone, the way these, these platforms are built.
I'm sorry, I, I, I don't mean, how quickly does the person get the message? I meant. How quickly would, how quickly could we, from the village standpoint. Implement this, this system so that it could be up and running for, say, March or, that, that's, I guess what I meant.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we could do it as quick as tomorrow if you wanted to, you know, we, we would sign up with a village account, do the free trial, add people's phone. As a test, and there you go, you're in.
Yeah, the biggest barrier is that we don't have people's cell phone numbers.
Is right, getting people.
Getting people to sign up for it and getting the word out there.
That's just communications, though.
Right, yeah.
But, you know, I mean. I mean, I don't think it's unrealistic to say, you know, it'll take a good, a year to build a robust database. You'll get the instant, you know, the first wave, people will sign up for it, but. You know, after that, with.
They'll trickle along.
Yeah.
I mean, one thing to consider is if, and I use the word if. We execute this garbage transfer, that might be a perfect opportunity to get everybody signed up.
Oh, true.
Because they're gonna want to get a garbage can. So it could almost be a get a can, get an alert kind of thing.
There's marketing one-on-one right there.
I mean, it's a captive audience. You know, they're banging the doors to get on the alert, but they are banging to get their garbage can. So I mean, just something to consider. It's not crazy.
Of the options that allow us to give a code for them to text in to opt in, for instance, like. I'm, I'm thinking about how we get people to sign up for this. If we're trying to collect everyone's phone numbers, we can certainly put it on the village website. To, you know, collect data that way, but then is it, could there be, do any of these options? Allow us to say, text one, two, three, VCS. To opt in to our village texting alerts.
Yes, so easy texting, which was the first platform. In terms of a business standpoint, I didn't like it because unless the person actually opted in. You couldn't send them anything. Even if you sent it, they wouldn't get it. They would have to physically send the code to a number that you publish to start getting alerts.
That's a little too specific. I'm looking for the easiest way to get, like, if I'm posting on social media. Like, here's our new system, and to sign up for it, this is how you do it. Like, what's.
Oh, I gotcha.
People to, to like, give us their phone numbers and their names.
Right. Easy texting would be the one to go, but then you wouldn't, you would have, they would have to send you a second message with their name. Cause there's no way you'd be able to map it otherwise on the web platform to know who it is that you're sending an alert to. Does that answer?
I don't think we need their names.
Maybe not.
Okay.
Yeah, we just want, if it's just to get out a message. I mean, I think what you're talking about, the easy texting is, you know, to opt into village text messages.
Number seven, nine, you know, one, zero, a hundred percent, that's what easy texting bases itself on, yes.
Right, and then this way they, they opt in, they put in their cell phone number, they opt in, and then we would go to that platform to send out a message. And then probably, I would think that when you send out the message, it also has the option now to stop receiving messages, text stop, or, you know. The standard thing that we get, you know, everybody gets now on text messages.
Yeah.
It sounds pretty easy.
We'd have to dig a little more with you guys to, to go into each of the options and, you know, help explain what they are. But definitely easy texting would, would be the one where they would type a code to opt in a hundred percent.
Yeah, we, we need to find the fastest way to collect the phone number data so that we keep moving. So if that's the easiest in, in your mind, or if, or if there's one that you recommend that is easier to get people to. Provide their phone numbers and opt in.
Yeah, easy texting would definitely be it, cause you could, like, your example was perfect. Hey, listen, if you want to opt in for village alerts, type in this code. And you could even get a local phone number, honestly, what is what they offer for extra money, of course. You can get a seven-digit, you know, phone number. You know, and then boom, they'll get a confirmation that they're in, you'll get the notification, and then you could add them to the list and send them out right away.
That sounds good.
Perfect. All right, so I think the last page was the general pricing page. So there's a lot of information on this page. So we started talking about the Microsoft Hub two. The fifty point five inch hardware alone came in at nine, nine thousand ninety-nine dollars. The eighty-five inch, although it's not double the size, it's unfortunately double the price. I don't know where that math came in. Certainly wasn't anybody's. Over here. The alternative to the hub is buying a rudimentary computer. TV, you know, comes with a mouse and keyboard. It's an actual system that you can log on to. So the one key difference with the Microsoft hub is it's not made to be used as a, as a computer. So you kind of lose that functionality. It's made to be a sharing platform. So although you can log on and like locally, it's still designed to be used as a presentation system. Whereas the benefit of the alternative is you have a full-blown computer that you're unrestricted to do anything with. Obviously, you know, not, you know, barring security concerns. You can do anything you want on that, cause it's a full computer behind the actual television. To get the key personnel of the village up to the full-blown sharing platform of Teams. It's basically the same plan that you have now, except so right now the village pays the four dollars per month per user for email. We would upgrade key individuals of your choice, and it would be twelve dollars and fifty cents per user per month. For those individuals that would take part in the meeting. So more than likely, it would be anybody who would collaborate on work. Primarily probably the, the board of trustees, I would imagine.
Could I, could I pause there for a second and ask a question?
Sure.
So the last, the blast board was heavily reliant on Google Docs.
Yes.
And I have, just from an institutional lifespan, I have concern about, about that. Because there is not backup for the work that was done on Google Docs, and I want everyone to be working from. Our software so that every night, you know, what we're, what we're working on at home is getting backed up. Doesn't matter where you're working on it. It's, it's a public record, right? So I'm wondering if Teams is, two questions. Can staff and trustees who are working remotely be. Logging into the system from whatever they have at home and. It will be captured. In our backup in the evenings.
Yes, to answer your question simply. So the way it works is we would create a link. So that, the way the cloud systems work is this. All these big companies want you off on-premise servers and want you on their cloud platform. Because there's more redundancy, there's more. There's more money to be made in it for them, you know, what we would do is we would leverage both. So we would, we would have an account installed on the server. And right now, the way the server is based on your position in the village, if, as long as you're in the village hall anyway. You have a data share assigned to you with whatever committee or board you're part of. We would link that share to the cloud. To the three sixty-five SharePoint Teams platform. And anything you do on the Teams platform will sync back to the server, but. Anything on the Teams platform has its own built-in redundancy based on, because of Microsoft's platform and SLA. So no matter where you're using it, it's backed up.
Okay, and, you know, Tweeps and I were trustees last year. So have had access from home to shared folders, et cetera. It was super clunky. And slow, and, you know, I think part, part of that is it's old technology. Some part of it is probably too. Internet connection in the village is pretty stinky.
Yeah, more that.
Well, if, if we were to move in a direction with Teams, do you anticipate. More efficiency in the connection and the speed of the connection than we have with the system we have right now? I think part of this is it got so frustrating for people working from home because the connection was so. You know, it crawled.
Yeah, that has a lot more to do with the internet connection. So right now, what happens is when you, when you VPN, you are with encryption directly dialing to the village hall internet. That's passing through the firewalls filtering for obvious security. And then depending on, on who's connecting, it's actually going to your computer. So one way to make that less frustrating would be to further increase the internet speed. At the village to handle more of the redundant connections, because you also have to remember, the police department is also constantly connected remotely via their cars.
Right.
But you're consuming quite a bit of bandwidth. I don't know exactly what the numbers were in terms of bandwidth that you guys are paying for, but they should have it on, on a bill. So, so take that into account when you're connecting remotely. So these other platforms, you're connecting to Microsoft's Azure. Platform rather than the village hall, and everything is syncing in the background on their cloud. Which are super high-performance systems with super high performance and redundant internet connections. Also unfortunately comes the question of what internet utilization is going on in your local home or place working. You know, there's definitely that as well. So there's a lot of different things. To look at in terms of when things are clunky or not moving. Definitely the cloud platform is proven to work much better because, like I said, it's built on a much. Bigger, better backbone.
And have the, have the trust, the current trustees all had, like, I spent a lot of time, I can't remember if it was you or David, when I first. Came on to get my laptop at home. To, to get the, what is, what is the acronym? VDF?
Oh, are, you were, so you guys are using RDP over a VPN?
VPN, yeah. Have, have the, the new trustees been oriented in the same way with their laptops at home so that they're working with the system, they're working with the village?
I believe everybody has been. I think we've worked with every trustee. And typically what we do is when we set it up, we don't only set it up, we kind of give you a crash course in how to connect.
Right.
You know, we try and make it as easy as possible. You know, we make, we, we show you how to connect, we make a shortcut for you to connect to your specific desktop. But I, I believe we have worked with everybody. I had to pull, I have a list in the ticket system, just to make sure if we have to pull it up.
So we all know how to use the painful system, is the answer. Okay, and now we're looking to that, we're looking to the less painful options.
The nice thing about, about using Microsoft's platform, you know, over the VPN, you know. There are certain people that are gonna have to use the VPN because of the financial applications that their function requires them to use.
The person who needs to be the most efficient, Michelle.
Yeah. We could certainly offload that to an Azure cloud system as well, but, you know, there comes the monthly cost. Processor usage, internet connection, the bandwidth, the server processing use, if I said that already, the data uses storage in play. You know, that can live on Azure or virtual server as well. But you're still gonna have to VPN and server, use it and RDP off the server in the cloud just the same. And then if you completely migrate to that, if and when, more so is the question, if the, when the village loses internet. You, unless you have a cellular backup, which we, our system can support if you wanted to. You wouldn't be able to work from the village hall if it was all completely cloud-based, which is why we like the hybrid situation.
I see.
Yeah, I, I would think we want to keep the VPN, at least for Michelle and myself.
Yeah. Of everybody else, you could, if you log into Microsoft platform and it's all, and it's all set up appropriately. And you're not using those applications, you can have access to everything you do at the village. And, you know, you know, you would sign in, you would hit the authenticator app on your phone to verify it's you, right? Cause it's something you know and something you have, authentication, and then boom, you in. And what's, what's nice about the Teams platform is everything integrates. So your outlook and your meetings and your documents will all integrate and be, you know, basically in front of you. On the Teams platform as you sign in. Platform.
I think you had mentioned earlier that for each user, they could access up to like five different devices.
Yes.
So if you work, whether you work on your phone or a tablet. If you, you sign in, you're gonna make edits to a document, it doesn't matter from what device you're using.
Correct, and you, and you could still, even from your cell phone, you could collaborate with that document in real time and see what other people are working on from what we're being. Understood, yes.
Cool.
It's the beauty of it. I mean, the platform now, if you're local in the village hall, if we share it properly, you know, we can do that just the same, but this, this opens up. The opportunity for that to happen without. Yeah, and, and just installing the Microsoft applications that you're allotted and signing into village account. Much, much more easier to use, much more efficient, really. And just to secure.
I'm, 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 I'm really concerned that we have a. We have a continuous public record of work and.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yes, that.
Sort of saying that broadly to everybody.
Yeah, you have, you have that regardless. I mean, honestly, you know, the, not only the fact that Google was being used, it's more. That it was being used in, you know, like, you're using an open source system with personal user accounts. You'd be switching from that to a commercialized system with government-class storage. You know, data backend redundancy behind it, you know, cause we have you guys classified as a government organization. So you have that added security on top of the ease of use and their applications. You know, I mean, I know pay, the application for Word and Mac is Pages, I think, but everybody in the world uses Microsoft Word or knows how to use it. Familiar with it, no matter what platform you use, you know, so it's something that's familiar to everybody. There's, there's essentially no learning curve. That would be the push to go into the Teams platform, definitely, if, especially if the VPNs are as clunky as they, as, as they're, as you're reporting.
Well. That was also the email, but we've moved beyond that. So I'm sorry, back to your, back to your discussion.
Yep, so, um, so that's what we, so we would, you would need to upgrade to the twelve dollars and fifty cents per user per month license. To get the applications installed and on up to five devices and, and use the Teams platform. In terms of the servers, depending on the redundancy options that we would select. You're looking, this is for both police and village, cause they both have to be done. You're looking at fifteen to twenty thousand dollars for both combined. We like to build things very redundant, so everything has. A data storage platform that's built over between four to eight hard drives. This way, if one or two hard drives fails, you're not losing your storage system. We also have redundant power in each of the servers. They have multiple power supplies. If one fails, the other one keeps the server running with zero downtime. These, these devices are also what's called hot-swappable, so that you can actually swap them out without turning off the server. They're made for high production environments. So those are what we would, what we would spec out or kind of budget for in terms of. The server upgrades, it'd probably be closer to the eighteen to twenty if we build it with the built-in redundancy like we're looking for in the VMware licensing. Cause the backend system that we use for virtualization is VMware because it's the world-proven platform besides Microsoft Hyper-V. Which also, you know, we could also bridge the gap even further and have. You know, you could log on to a website and have a virtualized desktop. It's called virtual desktop infrastructure, VDI for short. Where, you know, instead of using a remote desktop like you're doing now with the VPN, or even signing on to your applications. You go to a web browser, you type in a link, your password, your multi-factor, and within seconds, you have a real-time desktop in one of your tabs. Phenomenal technology. I use it down, down in the city. Uh, very expensive, I'm sure, you know, but it's, it's stuff that, that is available. Um, the work, if we were to look at replacing workstations. Workstations, I, you know, we used to be able to get for between the five to seven hundred dollar range because of. All the stocking and production issues in the world that have been created, you know, the prices are seven to eight hundred dollars. We like to get workstations and hardware with three-year warranties from the manufacturer onsite if possible. This way, if something happens to the device, we have Lenovo themselves, um, or whatever brand, you know, coming to the facility, repairing it with us. Um, it's more efficient for our techs, it's more efficient for you guys, it's, it's more rapid service. Um, the, the Microsoft Office currently installed, the offline versions do not have to be upgraded. Even if we change the workstation, because we can migrate the licenses from one machine to the other. Um, in terms of the CCTV systems, um, the standalone system that we quoted a couple of years ago at the gazebo. Came in at around sixty-two hundred. That was, um, standalone recorder. Uh, four cameras, one eight or four-channel recording system, all the wiring, the piping, everything. The one thing I would say, which, um, it was, I didn't really get into earlier is that. For these systems that are remote, rather than use the microwave connection, it may be better to. Grab, um, upgrade it to having a cable modem at each of these locations. Obviously, there's a monthly cost to it, but your accessibility, whether it's an offline system or a cloud system, you would get significantly better. Video system. With the cloud system, you're gonna need a cable modem there to, to upload to the cloud anyway. But for a standalone system, I'd still actually recommend it because it would just make it easier and a more fluid process to review video. Offline based system.
And what does, in previous conversations we've had about cameras and upgrading cameras, the sticking point seemed to be. The cost of storing data.
Yeah.
Which I find surprising, um. Can you explain that to me? It seems like da- data storage is much less expensive than it once was.
Uh, yes, so it's not that, it's not that the cost of data storage has. Uh, increased. What happens is, so. Uh, I'll use an example. So if you have a two-megapixel camera, right? Two megapixel is a ten eighty P TV. The way cameras work now is they're sent, they're essentially computers. So there's more, everything is digitized. For digital systems. So when specifically at night, there's more processing. Power and mathematical calculations to, to present to you what the camera's looking at with less light. Than there is when there's more light. So because of that, there's more data. That's taken up by the image. Does that make sense so far?
Yes.
Okay, so say a two-megapixel camera, and these are just, these are numbers that are just completely made up. The two-megapixel camera gives you on, say, one terabyte of storage. Gives you two months of video footage. Right? So I'm gonna write it down so I don't forget the example. One terabyte, two megapixel is two months, right? If you go to a four-megapixel camera or a five-megapixel camera. Or say we go to an, a four K camera, which is eight megapixel. Even though you're only quad, even not only, even though you're quadrupling the image quality. There's more mathematical processing calculations behind the images which take up more storage. That makes sense?
Yep.
So it's not that, it's not the question of, I mean, you're right. And it's essentially looking at it that the higher megapixel you go, the storage is more expensive because you need more. That makes sense. There are newer camera systems out there, newer cameras. It's a technology that it's, uh, so right now the cameras that you have, they're H dot two sixty-four. Which is a, believe it or not, a court-approved recording standard for video footage. The newer cameras that's, that are out there, there's this, the H dot two sixty-five codec. Which drastically reduces the information stored per image. Cause basically what video footage is, it's very fast images taken that are put together in a stream. To make it, you know, smooth for your eyes. Anything below eighteen frames per second. Your eyes will actually determine a separate pictures. Anything above eighteen frames a second, your eyes will see as fluid video. So the cameras that we like to use are at a minimum of twenty-four frames per second. Because the higher frames per second, the less data you lose, but the data it costs.
So, so those numbers, the number, th- those numbers would be helpful. In addition to the hardware purchase, getting a sense of what those numbers look like comparatively.
Yes.
Then we, we can't make one decision without the other.
Correct, but it's very, so it's, uh. When, when I was going to some courses, like high technical courses for CCTV calculations. It's kind of like a loaded question to ask in terms of how much storage you're gonna need for X amount of time. I don't mean to be insulting, don't take it that way. This is, I'm just explaining to you how it was explained to me, right? So there's never gonna be a point in time where the same amount of people are gonna be walking at the same block. At the same time of day with the same lighting, because the way motion is calculated with cameras is it's basically a change in lighting. The camera sees that there's a change in lighting from one pixel to another, from the previous to the next, and then it records the image. What's changing with the codec, which makes it more efficient in terms of storage, which we can get in basically a very rough average. Is the fact that what the technology does with the H dot two sixty-four. Is it only records what's changed for the next picture. That makes sense?
Okay.
You're saving on, that's, that's the only way you're saving on the data. So yeah, so like say, for example, what they're telling us the industry. If an H dot two sixty-four camera, two megapixel camera with one terabyte of storage gives you two months. There's a very close potential for that same camera with the H two sixty-five codec to give you, say, three to four months. And again, these are just crazy numbers I'm throwing out just to make the math simple.
So at the end of the day, just to try to simplify it in my mind, which might be impossible. The four cameras for the gazebo would be sixty-two hundred bucks, plus there's gonna be a data storage fee on top of that. And then the question I guess I would ask is the resolution of those four cameras, is it clear enough where I could detect a face?
So we, it depends on that. So if we did a standalone system, there's no data storage. The storage is actually on the offline system, which is basically what you have in the Village Hall right now. You have a traditional like kick vision recorder that has X amount of terabytes in it. And basically it recycles the data. The oldest footage is deleted as new information is written to it. So this sixty-two hundred dollars for a completely offline system. Um, I didn't pull out the actual quarter spec of how much storage was in it. Um, but we would definitely, we would look to get you two weeks to a month is what we would try and calculate. Uh, but that would be a one-time cost of the sixty-two hundred dollars. We do offer service contracts, which help in terms of, you know, cleaning the cameras. If a camera's out or if memory card is out in the camera, if it's a completely remote camera, we'd come in. You would pay for, if it's not warrantable, would be the hardware change. Um, we actually have that in place for the existing cameras now. We, we used it, I think, two months ago when one of the memory cards of the remote cameras failed.
So I have a quick question in that stand, just so that I understand, I'm summing up what I'm hearing and hopefully I'm hearing the right thing. Um, the standalone system, we're, we're not getting like. Uh, a monitor back in the office that shows what's happening. We only check it if something happens, like.
Correct. If you got a cable modem though, we could set up a monitoring station in the Village Hall so that you could see it live in real time. Or even on a mobile app or a computer application. You would need, you would need some kind of internet connection to that device, whether it be hardwired through a cable company or cellular modem. Correct.
Just Wi-Fi down at the gazebo would get it so that we could monitor up at Village Hall.
Uh, yeah, we could, we could make, we could use the existing microwave infrastructure and just build on it to expand it. This way you're not paying monthly fees. Um, my concern would be the distance and line of sight. But there would be no, there would be no monthly costs after investing in the microwave system because. It's just there. It's a hidden Wi-Fi network with very strong encryption that you can't find unless you're looking for, and you can't break unless you really want to.
Great. Okay, so, so that's the benefit of the standalone system.
Correct.
You're not paying for data storage at all and, and you can figure out a Wi-Fi or microwave system. To get us a picture up at the Village Hall for the Police Department.
Yes.
Base system is, uh, much more beautiful and integrated and we have it in our phones and we have everything there. But it sounds like it probably will cost a lot more.
Uh, well, the, well, for the cloud-based system, you're gonna have, you know, they would provide. The way they typically work is they provide you X amount of storage per camera. And whatever timeline that gives you, it gives you, but you're definitely gonna pay for that on a recurring basis. Um, what you, what you end up saving is the upfront cost of the recorder and microwave equipment. Um, you know, cause all you're, all you're basically installing are the cameras, connecting them to a, a powered switch that provides power to them. And some kind of link to the internet. You know, so, you know, you're saving probably about, say, a thousand dollars in hardware. Cloud system, but you have recurring fees associated with it.
Okay, well, we'll wait for, to hear, uh, back on the cloud fees when you get those.
Yes, yes. As soon as I get them, I'll definitely, uh, email them. Uh, Mr. Curdo, did I answer? You had another question. Did I answer all of it?
I guess. In simple terms, is the resolution of the picture enough to catch a face?
So that all depends on, um. Lighting, the megapixel of the camera and how far the person or persons are away from the camera, as well as the angle. Um, I mean, the four-megapixel camera is, you know, the ones that we get. Uh, we get really, we use really good quality cameras, um, we try to anyway, if, if the budget allows it. Where even at night, you should be able to see something like sixty feet away from the camera in pitch black. With just infrared technology off the cameras, if it's positioned appropriately, in best case scenario. Some are even ninety or a hundred and twenty feet away from the camera. Um, the more lighting at night, um, obviously the better it would be, um, taking away shadows and things like that. The purpose, these would be, this would be a purpose-built system specifically with the capability to make identifications. And what's nice about the cloud-based system is some of that technology may already be built into the platform. Where you'll have potential facial rec. You know, person recognition versus car recognition. There's also other systems that are completely, they're offline systems. But they're server-based recording system, they're used in very big corporations. Um, a Vigilon is one of them where they have very smart analytical features. Um, I know JetBlue uses them, um, not that that should, not like scary that they're a very big company. But you know, there's a lot of analytics. They particularly use it to see between, you know, what's a plane versus a box truck. You know, there's even technology out there, you know, that can alert if somebody's not wearing a mask on their face. Like there's very, very, you can get very detailed.
Just, just for the reassurance of the public, we're not looking, we're not looking to surveil the public, um, to any level of like that, what.
We'll be checking seat belts.
Yeah, the, the reason this is on the table at all is that we've had a number of instances of vandalism at the dock. Including the destruction of the beautiful donated lights, um, that scene that cuts in in the land trust made available. At the dock, um, vandalism of the Christmas tree, um, and you know, hate that we're here, but we are. Um, and there's, we have no way, we have no way of seeing. Down there without these, um, and that's why we're talking about it now. I'm sorry that we're here, but we are. We're not gonna be looking for people's masks.
No, no, but it was, it was just to tell you how detailed the analytics can get. You know, obviously there's, there's certain, you know, um, legal implications when you're using that kind of analytics, but we would address that at that point in time. Um, I mean, you know, there, the other thing, they're much more expensive options, but you can do full standalone cellular-based recording devices. Um, that you would mount on, you know, on light poles and things like that. Obviously, we would need more permissions from, um, uh, it's not nice that it does the power down there, right? It's, uh. Yeah, Central Hudson would have to approve the use of their poles for things like that, you know, it gets into, they're, they're significantly more cost. Uh, and you get less because for one camera, it's almost three times the price of a full four-camera system at the gazebo.
So it sounds like. You're, you have, they're, you are waiting for some more data, um, on, on numbers.
Yes.
To provide a comparative pricing, but it sounds as if you're recommending, you, you're saying, yes, we can, we can help the village. In some way get toward live, remote access to meetings, if that's something that, that we would like to do. You have a recommendation for, um, uh, a shared platform, a secure shared platform for us to be. Working on together to, and, and will also increase our efficiency. You have some recommendations about servers and I take note that support for ours goes away. Um, and, and security patches go away, um, because they are, that, that is being withdrawn from Microsoft because of the age of the servers. Um, and then you, you have some recommendations for options both to potentially. Upgrade cameras or build upon the, the cameras we have in place with the option of app adding others.
Yes, everything that you said is correct.
Okay.
Yes, just as a side note, not to scare anybody, even if the servers do go end of life. We have a multi-tiered security system. So before anything gets to the servers. This is a very strict content and data filtering process from the firewall. And then there's further security protections in the SWIC to prevent against denial of service type attacks. So there is multi-layers of security built into the system in the event that we couldn't upgrade them in the time they needed to be. Just wanna make sure that that's aware.
Anthony, the service is something though, we're gonna have to do.
Ultimately, yeah. Regardless, liability purposes and security purposes, yes.
Right.
And do you feel that we've addressed what we can? With the limitations of the construction type in the building in terms of connectivity. Particularly on the second floor where the police department is.
Uh, I think so. I think that, um, I think that the internet speed could certainly be better in the building. Um, the wiring outside of the building, we can't control, but the wiring in the building, you know, all this stuff. That we ran is, is pretty new within the last couple of years. Um, maybe another option, because there are so many outages, would be a cellular backup, but that's also another monthly recurring fee. Um, you know, but I think that over time, we've definitely addressed a lot of the issues and we, you know, we're slowly and responsibly bringing the village. Up to techno, the par of today and you know. This is what's nice about the meeting that we're having today is because it shows that and it shows the willingness. Um, to continue to wanna use technology appropriately and responsibly. So I, I think that we've addressed a lot of good stuff tonight. Um, the plan I think is, is, um, that we will come up with, I'm sure will be very responsible and, and forthcoming and, and effective and successful. Um, so I think it's, yes, all good and we're, we're addressing everything that, that's been, that needs to be addressed to make sure that technology is used effectively.
Anthony, internet speed at the office, I think where, um, I think we upgraded to a hundred. Yeah, we are last year from twenty-five. What would your recommendation be that we should do?
Um, I think the way that, that the companies bump it is you'd probably be at three hundred. The next bump. Um, but what you wanted, what you wanna do specifically for the VPN functionality is you wanna increase. So in terms of internet connection speeds, there's two, there's a downstream, which is what you're getting from the internet. And then there's an upstream, which is what you're sending out to the internet. What's, what would more than likely be the issue with the lack of performance in the VPNs would be the. Outbound traffic speed limitation from the village out to people's homes for the first. So the, so what you're probably getting now is you're probably getting a hundred down if I was to guess and maybe fifteen up. Usually if you bump to the three hundred, it'll bump you to thirty-five up. And even that little bump would make a significant difference in user experience over the VPNs.
Okay. Have, have we addressed, I have follow-up questions that I'll talk with you.
Yeah, we're taking so much time. I know we spent.
No, 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 I just, at some point I need, I need some help with, uh, I need some help with the phone.
Yeah.
Sounds pretty basic, but yes, I need some help with the phone. Um, so. We'll look forward to hearing back from you, um, and then obviously we need to sit with all of this in the budget process and figure out what. we'll look forward to hearing back from you, um, and then obviously, we need to sit with all of this in the budget process and figure out what our, what the priorities are. Have we hit what we needed to hit, folks? Do we feel like we've, we can give Anthony his evening back? Oh, and as trustee Starbuck and trustee Woods are, are technology and communications is their area, one of their areas of focus, so they'll be working with Jeff and, and with you directly.
Awesome, perfect.
And then we, obviously, we all come back together to make decisions, but they'll be helping to sort through the, the layers between.
Absolutely. Well, if, if everybody's good, I wanna congratulate the new board into their new positions. Happy New Year to everybody, and we look forward to continuing the relationship. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, that was a lot. Um, moving ahead, the next item on the agenda is an update, trustees Curdo and trustee Woods, um, related to garbage and Royal. We're gonna talk about garbage again. And again, and again.
Sure. Um, I guess I'll start tweets, you can pipe in, and we got Michelle and Jeff there as well, so everybody can kind of pipe in, just as an update. Um, so last week at the board meeting, we walked through a timeline as to how we got to this point with the bid process and where the prior board took it and where they left it off. Uh, we had said that the next step was going to be a conversation with Royal. Uh, so yesterday, uh, myself, uh, Jeff, Michelle, Tweeps and Bugsy, uh, had a Zoom call for about ninety minutes with Jim and Elizabeth Constantino from Royal. Um, it was a pretty productive conversation, some of it was just some background on Royal. Um, they've got over forty thousand bins in the geographic area, uh, they've been doing this kind of stuff for a long time. Uh, Jim had mentioned they've been communicating with the village for over two years, so they're very knowledgeable in the garbage and recycling needs of the village. Um. Then we kind of went into the, the, the whole bid process, they walked us through some of their uh, understandings, uh, we walked them through, you know, some questions that we had for it. Um, at the end of the day, it's probably ninety-five percent pretty clear, there's about five percent, I guess, and I'm just paraphrasing of issues that uh, we need more clarity on, and, uh, we need to have another conversation with, which we're gonna circulate uh, some of those questions this week amongst ourselves. Um, Jim had mentioned that upon approval, um, they would be able to start service probably within two weeks. Um, once it's confirmed that that's something that we wanna do. Uh, it would take approximately four to six weeks to execute the full turnover, which would be ordering the bins, uh, that's about a four-week lead time. And then two weeks for the distribution of the bins, which would happen on successive Saturdays. Um, the basic premise behind the bid, which is all in, uh, it's currently on the website, the village website on the cork page, is there are four exhibits, A, B, C, and D. The bulk of it is exhibit A, uh, which is six hundred and thirty-five tax parcels. Um, exhibit B are some dumpsters, C is village-owned property, and D um, is kind of a Main Street compilation. I have a little scratchy throat, sorry. Um. There was some, no, we didn't really get into too much of financial conversations because it's pretty clear in the bid. Um, Jim and Elizabeth have agreed that, uh, Elizabeth was gonna drop off two bins to the village this week. Uh, one ninety-five gallon, one sixty-five gallon for recycling, and we would use those as demos in whatever capacity we want. Uh, so people can actually see it, uh, we could take pictures of it, we could do social media of it. Um, and then Jim is gonna come to the village board on Wednesday, February second, and do a presentation. And answer any questions and all questions, uh, he's gonna send us that presentation ahead of time, so if we wanna add to it, uh, we can. And what I would like to do is, uh, when we finish with this meeting, I'm gonna send the board, uh, just a series of documents that they can kind of digest between now and February second. Um, I would ask that we put those on the village website as well. Uh, they're basically the full Royal bid, uh, that's the full bid document, which is actually already there. Uh, Michelle had put together an excellent analysis of the cost of the garbage for the village currently. And we can compare that with the cost of the bid. Um, she's got the numbers, and I'll let Michelle elaborate, uh, to the point where it really does monetarily cover itself, uh, which is a great thing. Uh, that's always been an obstacle, apparently. Um, and then basically have everybody, you know, digest the information, I'll reach out to each of the board members and ask if they wanna get together and just ask whatever questions they wanna ask of what I know, uh, and anyone else, Tweeps, Michelle, Jeff. Uh, so when we come on February second, uh, we come informed and we have questions that we wanna ask, so this process doesn't drag out for eight weeks or something like that. Uh, it doesn't need to be, in my opinion, but that's just my opinion. So I think the call was worthwhile, it was productive, uh, they seemed to be pretty reasonable. Um, as Dave and Marie had said prior, uh, they seem to be fairly easy to work with. Um, they do this all over the place, they do Nelsonville, they do Beacon, they do Fishkill, they do Poughkeepsie, they do Millbrook. Um, so they're very well-versed in this process. And I have no reason to think that the system wouldn't convert smoothly. Um, and my personal opinion is I think this will get garbage out of the village highway department, and the village highway department can really be kind of revitalized and become what everybody really wants to see in the village, which is fixing our sidewalks, our infrastructure, repairs, et cetera, et cetera, because there's just too much time spent on garbage collection. And I don't know anyone who moves to Cold Spring because of our garbage collection, but I do know they move here because of what they see on the sidewalks, they see our buildings and stuff like that. Um, the other piece of this equation is if we keep garbage, uh, we are going to have to purchase a garbage truck. And that's about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for a new one, and timelines on that are completely unknown. So, you know, that's part of the equation too, I think, if we keep garbage. And my personal opinion is I'd rather see that kind of money get spent somewhere else. Uh, we have a fire department building that's inadequate, uh, I'd rather spend money there than picking up garbage, but that's my opinion, and that's stuff that we can talk about, obviously, as a board. So that's what I got out of the meeting, if you guys wanna pipe in. Add anything, delete anything, um.
That's a really good, uh, update. I, I do have a question, and, and maybe it's one to toss to Royal, but I don't know if this got discussed on like, I have major concerns about what is recyclable, what is actually being processed, and how much of our recycling is landing in the trash. And I wonder if we could request from Royal either a tour? Like, I would love to see the sorting facility and see what they do to like, you know, like, if I send a can of a can that's grimy with cat food into my recycling, does it go into the trash bin at the end? Or do they have a, like, super washer that takes care of that? Those kinds of things, I wonder if there was a way to find out and, and be assured that we're doing as much as we can on our end to make sure recycling gets recycled.
So that, you know, from the times we've used Royal for recycling, do we get billed from uh, reci, re-community?
We get billed from re-community, so Royal would be the collection. Um, Royal does have their own transfer station, so if Royal was to be our, our vendor, um, permanently, I'm not sure what they do, but the end, the end point for garbage is the burn plant in Peak Skill or in Duchess. And for recycling, the end point is that Beacon recycling facility. But I'm not sure what Royal does, if anything, in between, when they collect our garbage as, in these one-off things. They just put in the truck, they bring it over to the.
Yeah.
Right, so they don't touch anything when they're doing it these one-off times. If they become a contractor permanently, I'm not sure if they would or they would do the same.
So we would get billed, for instance, for our recycling separately from the bill we pay Royal?
Not, if we go to Royal as our permanent contractor, no, it's one nut or one bill from Royal. But in these instances where they're filling in for us here and there, we pay Royal one fee for the service and we pay disposal as if we were doing it ourselves, which is a difficult thing.
Okay.
So in that example, if you wanna email me that question, um, I'll incorporate it into some of the questions that I can have him prepared to answer, so, you know, we don't kind of surprise him. And then I guess the same question would be, how does that apply to our current village process? So what do we do in that example at the same time? We would probably wanna know how it's being done both ways, if neither one is doing what they're supposed to be doing, then that raises probably a different question.
And some of those, of course, some, some of that is beyond the village's control and beyond Royal's control, I mean, I think it's sort of a, a problem worldwide that we're not recycling as much as we should be. It's not act, the actual, the actual end product is not.
Well, we do, yeah.
It to be.
What we do now is on recycling day, we pick up the recycling and we take it to Beacon, to the recycling center, and dump that, we don't go through it first to ensure that that's
Right.
recycling versus garbage, and we just take it to them and, you know, they charge us the per-ton fee.
So maybe we have.
It's all single stream.
Center.
If you've ever watched, um, what is it, uh, Undercover Boss, they did waste management, they actually had conveyor belts and people sorting the recycling. So I don't know if there's a facility like that at the end of the line for hours, but that is the reality of some recycling.
And since municipalities do those things in-house, some larger counties have a county facility that, that is the sorting station, the, the transfer station, um, we don't have that here in Putnam, unfortunately, it'd be a great um, that'd be a great way to work together as towns to get a more efficient county-wide process. All ideas to take forward.
Yeah, ultimately, I just wanna know how to communicate to our community what they can put in the bin and what they shouldn't be putting in the bin.
Yep, just really ba, baseline information that makes what we can do better.
And on Royal's bid, uh, which I'm going to send you, which we will put on the village website, which is the bid document, there is a flyer towards the end of it where he does specify what's considered recycling and what's not considered recycling. So in other words, a couch is not considered recycling, that would fall under bulk pickup.
I don't know, they have some kind of bulk pickup day, like, um, you know, for people who do put out that kind of stuff, is that in the bid at all?
Yes, that's actually one of the items that was, uh, biddable.
In, in C?
Yep, so that, you'll see all that in the stuff that I send you, uh, the, the bulk pickup was seventy-four hundred and ten dollars a year. Um, brush was a second, uh, option, uh, that was about seventy-four eighty-four. Uh, and then there was what was called Sunday Morning, which is that, uh, pickup on Main Street. Um, they would be using the existing Main Street receptacles. Uh, they wouldn't be taking those out and replacing them with those traditional Royal, uh, things that you see in Nelsonville. They would be using the existing ones. And they confirmed also that the pickup would be done manually, uh, not with like a robo-arm setup that you see in some places. Uh, the village is just not configured for that kind of stuff, and he kinda, he understands that. He's pretty knowledgeable on what goes on in garbage in the village, apparently. These conversations have been had for years, and it just never got monetarily close enough where it was worth pursuing. And it seems to be that Michelle has gotten it to that point, so that's why this thing is proceeded um, back in the fall.
At one point, there was a discussion, uh, with, um, uh, doing big bellies on Main Street, like they do linebackers.
And I, I still, I still would love at some point to have solar-powered compacting trash bins on Main Street. But let's get through this first, and then, then we can have that conversation. Um, okay, or anything else on garbage, Tweeps? You good?
Oh, I'm great on garbage, yeah, thank you.
Michelle, anything?
Do you feel trashed?
Yes.
You're good, okay. So, um, moving on then, um, the next, this is also a carryover um, item that we're, that we're to resolve, um, uh, redevelopment of Forty Main Street, the old, um, Ford dealership down next to, um, where Chapeau is, not between Chapeau and, and the Bijou Building, um, that block stones, the beautiful stone building um, is being redeveloped as, um, a retail and office space, office space in the back to retail, um, sites at the front at the street. Um, and the planning board and the developer, um, reached um, a point in negotiations related to parking, wherein there, there is not the capacity for, um, uh, obviously, street parking for the code-required forty-four parking spaces. And so the planning board began a very creative, um, conversation, and I think really excellent um, actual active planning and thinking about what options could be to capture um, an office use on Main Street to recapture the use of, of a building of, of, on our, on our historic Main Street and to have people working in the village during the day and eating on Main Street, spending on Main Street. Um, lots of reasons to make this development work, um, and the creative solution was, um, variances, uh, for the I'm sorry, parking, um, waivers for the retail spaces that they cannot provide. Um, and waivers for the balance, um, which would be accommodated in the municipal lot, and on top of the waivers, um, a, an annual fee um, related to parking cars in that lot. The developer has not asked for assigned spaces, um, at this stage. Um, the code would require thirty-seven, he believes he only needs twenty. So what is before us now is the question I delivered to all of you, we're not gonna go into details of, of the, of the potential terms this evening, but what I am asking the board, um, is, given the, sort of the parameters that were laid out um, as a starting point for the village attorney and some of the options within, are you, um, do you, do you approve me going on to then negotiate an agreement to, um, for, for parking on that site so that the site plan can be approved and development can go forward?
Um, so I'll jump in, and I will say, um, yes, I think this is actually a very creative solution to what could have been uh, a big kerfuffle of a problem, because we do not actually physically have the spaces on Main Street, but we do have capacity at other locations, and, um, seems that the developer is um, willing to work with us on this and has been, um, uh, very, uh, what's the word, I guess, um, uh, appreciative of the process that we've been working toward, um, to get this done in a timely manner um, for this development to move forward, so I think it's great, and I would support, uh, moving it forward.
Um, I would support it too, I, I think that, um, creative solutions is the way to go. In situations with parking, we can't produce more parking, but we, we can work with what we have, and, um, there's a strong possibility that their employees are going to find solutions like parking at train stations and taking the train to Cold Spring and things like that, as well as, you know, if, if parking becomes a major problem for them. So, um, I think that, that they're willing to work with us on finding somewhere in between that works, um, and help support the, you know, village parking situation through waivers is a, a fine solution.
I'll go next, yeah, the cat, uh, she supports it too. Um, so, you know, I've been, I've been, uh, when I was on the parking, uh, committee, we read the Donald Shoup's book, and there's a whole school of thought in parking that the one-for-three is so completely and utterly outdated, and that, you know, creativity is really the way to go. And more often than not, it's a convenience problem and not a shortage. So I am all in for the creative solution.
Excellent. Um, it should be noted that this is a, also a revenue source for the village.
Yeah.
Not, not insignificant. Revenue, which will give us. Revenue, which will give us costs, you know, give us, have money available to do other things, to address some of the issues we need to address in terms of repairs, et cetera. And also our municipal lot, you know, we did, we did trustee early, um, and, uh, former planning board chair Matt Francisco did do an analysis of use based on the meter, um, at the municipal lot. And it is underutilized during the week. So this is an opportunity to produce revenue on otherwise lost space during the week. Yes, Catherine?
Um, what is the revenue from the lot? Yeah. Is there a line in the budget? I'm sorry. I didn't really, I
Shell still on?
Yeah, um, there is, um, there's a line in the budget for both revenue and expense.
Specific to parking. Okay. Sorry. I just haven't gotten that far down.
For the municipal lot itself, um, you know, if there's a, a little bit of parking in the village that has its own line. Um, and on average right now, before the raises, the increase in the amount, um, we're averaging at least twenty thousand a year in revenue.
And now we've got Mayor's Park as added on. So that's a new piece.
Spaces in front of Mayor's Park.
Right. So the fact that the developer, um, has those two spaces and it's not just the one next to River View, uh, I don't think imposes any problems on the parking capacity. And as long as there is a built-in annual revenue stream from this, I'm all in favor of it. I mean, these one-time exclusion things, I mean, I always thought they should be an annual thing, but that's a different conversation for a different day.
I agree with you, Joe.
Um, but this one, I think if you can get a consistent annual revenue out of it, um, that is only a positive and it's only a good thing. So go to it. And if you need any help along the way, just scream.
Thank you so much. Jeff, do we need a vote?
There, you should have one on this. Yes.
So, um, would someone like to make a motion or I can make a motion that, well, no, you're authorizing me. Someone else make the motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize you to negotiate, uh, with, uh, forty Main Street to, uh, come to some terms on the parking agreement.
Thank you. Excellent. All in favor? Any opposed? Great. Thanks so much. I'll keep you updated.
Can I, can I ask a question? Just as, um, in the interest of, of the condo down there.
In the interest of what?
Of the condo, you know, of Springbrook and the parking in Springbrook. Um, are we moving any closer to getting at least the, the road over there fixed?
So the, are you talking about the, uh, Northern Avenue? Yeah. So that is a piece that we need the engineer for. And I had mentioned last week that, that the water, water and wastewater supervisor, Greg, I'm sorry, Craig. I still say Greg. Sorry, Matt.
It'll always, it'll always be Greg. What's the guy's name? Matthew.
Um, because he has experience writing broad RFPs and I think we need his input on the water. He is, he has agreed to help me do that. He is down. He lost a staff member, um, this week. So right now we have two guys in water and they're doing all the work. So he's, he's a little pressed. And he has, he has dates. He has to meet for water testing, et cetera. Um, but it's on the plate and that is, that issue on Northern Avenue is one of the first things that we need to address. Um, in my mind, anyway, we have to talk about, we have to talk about priorities as a group, but in my mind, that's one of the first things we need to address because it's been sitting like that for quite some time and it's dangerous. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, yeah. Okay. So, uh, this is a, it's, it's more keeping you informed than anything. We are going into budget season and only the water department has ever done performance evaluations, um, for employees. And m- my feeling is that without performance appraisals, the decisions to modify salaries are subjective. Uh, or I'm sorry, are, are, could, can, could be potentially arbitrary. Um, and they need to be based on data. We don't, we don't necessarily work with every employee every day. The department heads do. Um, so I did contact the, or Michelle with, with Michelle. Michelle contacted the, human resources department at Putnam County to get some examples of performance appraisals. Um, we need to make them fit the village a little better. Um, but I, but I would like to institute in advance of budget season, a process of performance appraisals.
Great idea.
It's good. Sort of, I don't, I don't know if any of you, I've never had a job where I didn't have a performance appraisal.
I rate my own performance. Yeah, you gotta
Well, yes, you rate your
Look in the mirror and say, am I doing a good job or am I not doing a good job?
Okay. So we'll, is everyone
Yeah, can I, can I also add, um, I, and I might have missed this if you said, um, not only the, um, performance appraisal, but also having clear job descriptions for each position. Um, I don't know if you, if you mentioned that, but I think that's a very important piece too.
Yes, there, that, um, Michelle is, Michelle is helping us with the civil service side of that, right? Making sure that we meet, um, requirements for descriptions with that. And, and one of the things that Tweeps and I are doing in our off, in our department head conversations is saying, all right, let's talk about what you actually do. This is what your job description says you do, but what do you actually do? Um, and how much, how much are you doing that's not part of your job description? Um, there's, there's a lot of sort of internal operation stuff that needs, that needs addressing. Um, and that the, the staff, I think, are eager to have that kind of consistency and, and documented operation.
As long as we keep enough flexibility in that.
Yes.
Where a small company, you wear a lot of hats and sometimes you wear more hats than you need to wear. But I've seen small companies where it becomes very rigid with job descriptions and it's not my job kind of thing. And I'm not sure that we would want that. So you have to, there has to be some element of flexibility in it.
Absolutely.
Well, it's a dynamic organization while trying to get something accomplished within a structure.
Well, this will, this will lead into our next conversation, um, regarding COVID. But, you know, the, the, the big lesson of this surge in the last month is people have to be cross-trained to be able to cover each other's backs. Jeff and Michelle have a really fine working relationship and, and work together and can cover each other's backs relatively easily. Other parts of office operations are not that way. And so Jeff is leading up the effort to make sure that we do have people who are cross-trained. Um, and this, you know, the sa- the same, the same idea with water and wastewater and highway, making sure that we have multiple people. Someone can't get in that, like, no, I, I can, I'm concerned about the idea that someone feels that they are so that there's, the village is so dependent on them that they can't take a day off. I, that's not a, that, that's not a healthy, it's not a healthy working environment either. Um, so making sure that, that we do have some cross-training and, and redundancies so that we can get through rough patches and people feel like they can walk away and really shut the village off when they go off duty. So that's what we, we did. I think the staff did exceedingly well through the last few weeks have been really rough. Um, people having to do jobs from home, do jobs while feeling crappy just to keep things rolling. Um, and to do really hard outdoor labor with fewer bodies than we normally have, um, to get us through. So first, thank you to everyone. Um, and switching into the, to the COVID. So I think that we began this conversation in a well-intentioned place at the height of, at the height of Omicron, when we were really getting hit, right? And we, we were from a good place, trying to come, um, trying to keep, to create a safe workplace. Um, and we first started with the discussion of a vaccination policy. Um, as it became clear, as time went on and with, with feedback that we were losing as many, as many people to, to COVID, not losing them, but people being sick with COVID who were vaccinated as unvaccinated, the shift became to testing. And now we're at a point where we're, we're realizing, you know, there's only, there's only two staff that have not yet been sick. Um, so it's kind of worked its way through everyone. Um, and so my, my feeling is at this stage, we did adopt a policy early on, but I think it's appropriate that I propose that we rescind that policy because in the time that it took us to get it finalized, the environment has shifted completely. Um, the numbers are starting to come down. Please God, they'll keep coming down. And as we get into warmer weather, um, hopefully that will help as well. And we're also finding very, such variability as everyone is in terms of how this virus acts in different people's bodies, how long people are down, how long they stay testing positive. Um, so we need, we need flexibility, going back to Joe's earlier point. Um, so my recommendation tonight is that we rescind the policy that we passed on the fifth and we instead shift to, um, more flexible sort of safe, safety guidelines. And it's, it's really just the common sense stuff. You know, the mask distance wash that we're, we're all, we've all been saying for two years now. But, you know, reinforcing the, the very logical, if you feel sick, stay home, get a test, figure if you, figure out if you have COVID, whatever way you can get a test. We know that we recognize that there are shortages. Everyone should order from the US Post Office. Every family, every household can get four through the US Post Office on the USPS website. Um, throwing that out there as a plug. Um, and we, that's a good thing we can message around too. Um, if you're sick during your shift, go home. If test kits are available at Village Hall, we have some, uh, you can, you're welcome to use them or go to a testing site. We're also finding us predicted that the, the days are starting to cut back, um, at rec. So that's a reality. And then if you have COVID, obviously follow the CDC guidelines for isolation and please don't come back till you feel better. So that's what I'm proposing.
We need to make a motion?
I, I make a motion to rescind the vaccination policy and to, um, put forward a weekly flexible guideline update to our staff. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, great. Um, what is left is approval of bills. Who has? Who is putting, who is putting the batch forward?
I'll make a motion to approve batch number six, three, one, five in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and eleven cents.
Second?
We'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Actually think we have any members of the public other than Mr. Turtin on this evening.
A couple of minutes.
Yeah, you got minutes to approve.
Oh, minutes. Sorry, forgot the minutes. Any may have a motion on the December seventh minutes. I'm assuming that everyone has made any, um, edits that you wish to make with Jeff. Okay.
Motion to approve the seven.
Second, I, I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes of twelve twenty-one, they have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of twelve twenty-one.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you for catching that.
Connected. Yeah. Uh, I would just like to say, those are lovely minutes.
I think so much better than
They are brief, they are to the point, they are neat and I've seen minutes before. I, I like those minutes. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Twenty twenty-two clerk of the year.
No, it's for real. For real. Jeff has also had, um, backup from Karen. I don't know if everybody's had an opportunity to meet Karen. Um, she is the secretary to the, to the standing boards and she has been leaning in to help catch up with our board business. And she's also just super great. Um, so, yes, we are in a very different place than we were your last, last round together. Okay. Now, I don't think we have anyone. But Michael, Michael, do you have any questions for us? As the only member of the public, right on. Um, any other business, any other discussion? Motion to adjourn?
I second it.
And are you making the motion, Eliza?
Oh, I thought you were.
I, I was asking for a motion. That's okay. You've made it.
I'll second.
Right on. All in favor? Have a good evening.
All right. Good night, everybody.
You too. Good night. Did you like that, Rose?